All right, six o'clock, call the meeting to order. Those who care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Franklin, please lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Lord, you are the light that guides our feet. You are the map that gives us direction. You are the peace that makes us strong, and you are the leader we faithfully follow. May your light illuminate our lives and your guidance bring us direction. May we find inspiration in your word and peace in our hearts. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, thank you for being here. It's nice to see everybody again. It feels like it's been a minute since we've been. I realized that I always want to say the pledge of allegiance faster than everybody else, and I couldn't figure out why in this memory made me think of when I was in Boy Scouts, we used to try to say all in one breath really fast. And now I've realized it messed with me thirty years later, so I'm sorry about that if I move us along too fast. I would like to open it up for citizen participation. Anyone here wishing to speak about something not on the agenda, please approach the podium. You will be given three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I will close citizen participation. Moving on to the consent agenda. I welcome any of the council members to ask any questions or make any comments on agenda items one through four. Any questions, any comments? Seeing none, I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion, second.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Board and commissions and committees scheduled. Upcoming, we have the Board of Adjustments meeting on April seventh, 2022. We have a city council workshop on April fifth, 2022 at five thirty, followed by a city council meeting, April fifth, 2022 at six thirty. Then we have a planning and zoning meeting, April eleventh, 2022, and finally, a city council meeting on April nineteenth, 2022. Please update your calendars to be here a little bit early for the next city council meeting, because sometimes I forget, so I'm saying that out loud for myself. Moving on to old business and table items. This is number five on our agenda, twenty-two dash R dash eleven, a resolution of the city council to approve Bartlett and West as engineering officials for the City of Republic Quiet Zone Study. I need a motion and a second to take this tabled item up.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to give a brief update, because we had a little bit of discussions at the last meeting over this resolution. So just to clarify, a study is preliminary engineering, which would be what I would call like a twenty percent effort in this endeavor. So it would give us a little bit of an intelligent metric on what this might actually cost or what the railroad might actually require, if it's even possible, to make sure that we get a quiet zone.
A few questions?
Sure.
Now, at the last council meeting, we had quite a few questions from council, and I anticipate a few more coming your way. But is this a major transportation issue from the city's perspective?
No, and I say that with not saying that it's not important, but I have to say that no, in the top ten priorities of the city for transportation, this is not something that I would recommend that we fund in the near future. I mean, in my mind, we're thinking about things like 174 Main, Hines and ZZ, Lynn and Hines, all of those things would rank far ahead of this.
You know, this resolution ended up on our agenda. How did it end up on our agenda?
I think there's a long history here that goes probably back before even a lot of the staff that's here today, but it's a common question, a lot of times with new citizens, is there anything we can do about the train horns? So I think it's appropriate to bring a resolution to the council to weigh whether it's, you know, a priority for the city or not.
Does council have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question, actually.
Councilman Franklin.
If this is implemented, will this change the speed of the train as it's coming through town? That was one thing I really couldn't find on speed limit, whether that slows them down.
I do not believe that it will. If anything, the improvements, as I understand, what the railroad would require for the quiet zone would actually allow them to go faster.
Faster.
If they chose to. Now, I don't, is that possible? I don't know, because I'm not a train engineer, just the regular kind of engineer.
Speed limit on trains through Republic is sixty. The speed limit for trains through Republic is sixty miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty quick right now.
It takes about two minutes for a train to go through.
You know, Mr. Franklin.
That's about how long you wait for a traffic light in town.
Mr. Franklin, I noticed that on Facebook you put an interesting poll up. Were you going to address that?
Yes, absolutely. I was just seeing if there was any more questions before. I've more or less kind of come to a conclusion on this myself. I've had a lot of discussions since the last meeting, our MoDOT meeting. I even went back and looked at, we were discussing the noise ordinance when it was a hot topic, that not train noise, but a different kind of noise. And so it was really interesting, that time period in Republic. I really feel like the public maybe have had this noise concerns as a different priority than it is now. That Facebook polling that I did was just a small sample. It was only on there for about twenty-four hours, but it was a really good feel for how, what as a priority, what it is for citizens. Constantly, you know, safety was a high priority for the citizens. The concern that this will go through a school ground, there's playgrounds everywhere. Children will be walking across those tracks to and from school. The roads was definitely something that that survey found that was a priority to the citizens. They really wanted to see road repair, maintenance, and that sort of thing as a priority over this. And looking at this and the noise ordinance for the quiet zone in particular, after talking with people, I looked at the sites. I visited a few of them in Springfield, kind of got a feel for what they are, what they would look like. Went back to all of the information that we've had when this came to council at the first time, the emails that were sent in, a lot of different stuff. But most generally, the conclusion that I came to out of the responses to that poll with two different groups on two different posts, it was a total of seventy-one people found that we should prioritize in a different manner than the noise zone. Two respondents that I could find that saw the quiet zones as a priority. And so I did a lot of talking with a lot of different people. That's just kind of a review of what I found. So that's more or less what I had found from multiple different sources.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments?
What would be just a general ballpark if it does go through?
Oh, that's a good one. You know, in just my brief, brief look at it, I think you're talking about a little over a million probably throughout town to get all of the required improvements and do them the right way. I think if you wanted to, the sky's the limit. Because if you look at Maine specifically, there's a grade problem there, there's a narrow street. What we would have to do to actually make that work, and then the side streets that we'd have to close, you could probably easily spend a million dollars just on Main Street.
Mr. Mayor, that was another thing in my consideration as well, is the fact that I know they have certain guidelines where you can't just fix like Main Street, maybe the next one, and then call it a quiet zone. There's a distance and there's, in my mind, when I'm looking at this, I'm seeing in addition to those closures, we're going to have to do all of the intersections in order to get that classification. And so just the process and the length of time that it would take to do that, it just seems very costly when I'm looking at it.
Yeah, and the only other item I would add is that the engineer, the train engineer in this case, has the ultimate discretion. So, you know, if they feel like, especially through a school, you know, if it's erring on the side of caution, they're probably gonna blow the horn even if it is a quiet zone.
So if I'm getting the sense of where things are going, if this gets voted down tonight theoretically, is this something that's dead forever, or what can we do in the future if it becomes a priority, or we win the lottery?
I don't, I don't think so. I think, you know, we haven't expended a lot of effort toward getting a quiet zone other than doing some surveys of the citizens and asking if it was a priority. So I think if it becomes a priority through the survey or through just citizens participating via council meeting or anything else, then we bring it back and we can pick up right where we left off.
Any, oh, yes, sir.
Has been, have we approached BNSF about partnering with them fixing the crossings? Or this would just be strictly a city thing?
Yeah, they put the burden generally on the cities unless you're taking away a crossing completely. So if you, at a grade crossing, if you can get rid of it, they get interested in participating because you're eliminating a liability for them. But in this case, I don't foresee that we're closing any of those crossings, probably with the quiet zone. That's always been a tough discussion, even back when we had the highway discussions. People didn't like the noise of the train, but they also didn't want their crossing to be closed.
Mr. Wilson.
Didn't they want to close the intersect, the railroad crossing there at Ford and at O'Neal Road at one time?
Yeah, they're, the railroad safety grant that MoDOT did, they had a proposed closing at Friendly Ford. That actually is a county route right there, and they were opposed to closing it. The county was, Green County was.
Yeah, I was able to talk to the city staff, and after weighing like cost and benefit, it just didn't make a lot of sense in my mind, just seeing that the potential of them not even abiding by it and then the other priorities that we have as a city was kind of the conclusion I came to.
Well, then, given everything I'm hearing, what I'm going to do is I'm gonna call up for a vote. As this is a resolution, we can go directly for that. All those in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry.
Of what? All those in favor of what?
Of the resolution. Sorry, sorry, I made my routine of resolution voting. Sorry, I thought you said I. I was like, ah, is that cool? All those in favor of the resolution of the city council to approve Bartlett and West as engineering officials for the City of Republic Quiet Zone Study? Any in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstain? Resolution fails, zero to six. Moving on to new business, this is item number six on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash twelve by title only.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately zero point nine four acres located at two twenty-one East US Highway sixty from local commercial C one to general commercial C two.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, Assistant Builds Director. Mr. Carter has applied for the rezoning from local commercial to general commercial, which is C two, for the parcel located two twenty-one East US Highway sixteen. The parcel is currently vacant. The property is bordered by both medium-density, single-family residential to the north, ease-in to the east, zoned local commercial. Also, local commercial across the street, and it is in proximity also to Dairy Queen to the west. The property can be adequately served by municipal water and sanitary sewer services. The property does not contain any floodplain or identified sinkholes. The property currently has deeded MoDOT access to US Highway sixteen. The exact placement of the access will be determined by MoDOT and the city's engineer upon site development. The rezoning is in compliance with the city's adopted plans. One question, but no actual opposition was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. P&amp;Z is unanimously recommending approval, as is staff.
Questions from council?
Yes, can you just give us a brief rundown on the difference between C two and C one? What's allowed in C two that's not in C one?
Yes, so general commercial is a more intense district as far as the retail type uses. So you do have uses such as restaurants, gas stations, office buildings in both districts. But C two does include more intense uses like mechanic shop, auto body, some types of larger scale retail, such as like storage buildings, boat and RV type facilities.
Outdoor storage.
You can do some types of outdoor storage.
Other questions?
Karen, do you know what it's gonna be used for?
I do not know exactly. They have expressed some interest in a billboard, I think, at that location. Billboards, according to our sign ordinance, do require the general commercial zoning district.
Has this been brought up before, that this land has been tried to be built on?
We have had several conversations during the last couple of years during pre-application meetings. There are some challenges to actual development of this land besides just the unique configuration of the property. There are some sanitary sewer issues that they will have to work through in order to connect to the sanitary sewer system directly north of the medium-density, single-family zoning.
A gentleman that I know that lives behind that property says the previous owner of that property tried to do sewer through his land, and he was trying to kind of force him to do it. But he said since he sold it and the new owner is trying to do everything the right way, that he's got no problem with it right now.
Yeah, there are a couple different options, which we have explained to everyone that's been interested in this particular piece of property. They could obtain an easement through the single-family zoning district to the north, and there are like five homes through there. The area that you see that doesn't actually have coloring is an alley. So it is a platted city alley. There is an opportunity to run the sanitary sewer system through the alley up to the street to the north where they can connect to the nearest manhole. There are a few challenges, it's gonna have to be encased and such, but it is very possible.
Any other questions or discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, and so just, this may be kind of stepping ahead of myself. So who would pay for that connection if, like, for example, they were to go through that alley? Would that be on the developer, or would that be on the city?
It would, because this is not something that's identified in our master plans. Generally speaking, the city would not engage in proactively doing those types of connections. This one is relatively small, and it would not be a significant reach for the developer to actually make that connection.
Thank you. All right, any citizen comments on this issue? Please, sir, approach the podium, state your name.
I'm Tracy Carter, I'm the person purchasing the property, and I kind of hate to waste a lot of your time, but we, first of all, I was gonna tell you, thank you for honoring God and the country. It's refreshing to want to do business in a town that's important. The gentleman you were talking to, we talked to him, but we've actually already obtained easement for the sewer. It's already been recorded with the county, so that's already done. And when we went to the city and were asking about zoning, they told us basically the only difference between C one and C two in the big picture was that you could have a garage to put a service truck for C two. And for our business, that would be important. So it's about all, I think we've got any other questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comment? All right, seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash thirteen by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately six point three zero acres located at six zero two one West US Highway sixty from agricultural AG and light industrial M one to heavy industrial M two.
Thank you, ma'am. Hi.
Hi, thank you. Burke Bridge Company has applied for the rezoning from agricultural AG to light and, and light industrial M one to heavy industrial M two for the parcel located at sixty twenty-one West US Highway sixty. The parcel contains two primary commercial structures and was previously occupied by Burke Bridge Company. The property is surrounded by light industrial M one to the west, agricultural AG to the north, light industrial M one to the east, and then finally, US Highway sixty to the south. The property can be adequately served by municipal water and sanitary sewer services. The property does not contain any floodplain or identified sinkholes. The property currently has two access points to US Highway sixty that are both deeded, which will continue to be utilized for future development. These access points are also utilized by the adjacent properties on either side, and they do contain a thirty-foot platted easement to serve those adjacent properties. The rezoning is in compliance with the city's adopted master plans. No opposition was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. P&amp;Z is unanimously recommending approval, as is staff.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council?
Same questions before, the difference between M one and M two?
Yes, so in the manufacturing districts, generally speaking, you have warehousing and various types of industrial or manufacturing uses. Basically, with the M two zoning district, everything is at play. So the way that our zoning ordinance is set up, basically, it's a kind of a graduating ordinance. So everything in M two is also included in, as a permitted use in M one, C two, and C one. So it is the most intense zoning district, basically allowing any type of permitted use besides residential that the city allows.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I've just got to just, what's with the shading on the? It's an odd question, I know.
Yeah, so, and you can tell this is all the way kind of the swath of US Highway sixty. At some point in the past, there was a rezoning that basically had this M one zoning district as an overlay directly adjacent to US Highway sixty. So that's why we have all of these parcels that have a mixed zoning. So the green is agricultural, the light blue is M one. So you can see, it's not only this parcel, but it's like five different parcels that are basically split. This also, this particular rezoning also cleans that up, because it's very hard to develop on one piece of property in a manner where you have two zoning districts with two different regulations on setbacks, permitted uses, buffering, landscaping, parking, all of the design requirements for commercial uses.
So then are the odd shapes, are those separate parcels as well?
Yes, they're very odd-shaped parcels also along here. So the very, the dark blue outlined parcel with the two buildings, that is the parcel that we're speaking of tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Why was the swath created? When was it created? What was, what was her logic, if you know?
I honestly, I don't know, and that's something that we've kind of talked about looking back to try to figure out the reasoning behind that. Ultimately, we decided that it probably wasn't worth the staff time involved to go back through those hard copies to make that determination. This is one of the only areas in the city that does have that. There's just another little area along US Highway sixty closer this direction that has a similar type issue, but it's less relevant because they're both commercial zoning districts. This is just unusual because it's industrial and agricultural.
So you're not gonna come to us suggesting something like that in the future?
I would probably never do so, no.
She said probably.
Probably. Engineers and lawyers, they leave all that wiggle room.
Right, planners too.
Any other questions, comments? Any citizen participation? Please, sir. Please state your name and address.
Jake Densing, forty-six forty-six South Connor Avenue, Springfield, Missouri, six five eight oh four.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My wife and I recently purchased this property, closed last week on it.
Congratulations.
And, thank you. Just wanted to make myself available for any questions. We plan a formal announcement of what we're going to put on there, so if I can get through this without disclosing that, that would be great. But happy to answer anything you guys might ask.
So the rumor mill's pretty rampant right now.
I hope so.
Because I know several people who's got their own ideas for that property that you've probably met before. Doug Tudor?
Doug Tudor, yeah.
Yeah, I've talked to him several times, so I'll be quiet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here and congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other citizen participation? All right, seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda. That's right, right, eight? We're at eight, perfect. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of, for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash fourteen by title only.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately six point zero two acres located at the forty-one hundred block of South Farm Road one oh three from local commercial C one to general commercial C two.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Solarplex LLC has applied for the rezoning from local commercial C one to general commercial C two for the parcel located in the forty-one hundred block of South Farm Road one oh three. The parcel is currently vacant. The subject parcel is surrounded by local commercial to the west, multifamily residential to the north, Green County Agricultural to the east, and agricultural property to the south. The property can be served by municipal water and sanitary sewer services. The property does contain an area of floodplain, but does not contain any identified sinkholes. The property will have sole access to South Farm Road one oh three. No access to West Republic Road will be allowed. The rezoning is in compliance with the city's adopted master plans. No opposition was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. P&amp;Z is unanimously recommending approval, as is staff.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or discussion from council?
So this picture before the roundabout was built?
Yeah, so the roundabout is right at the intersection of Rep. Mode Drive and South Farm Road one oh three and Republic Road.
They've got a big sign out there, too.
I saw that. Mr. Mayor, was there a public hearing for this one, and no one showed?
Yes, there was a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. We did have, the applicants were in support of the rezoning request.
Other questions? Mr. Uptick?
This has no effect on the MM project?
No, it does not.
Seeing no other questions, any citizen comment? Please, sir. State your name and your address.
Kevin Bliss at one twenty-two West Silver Oak Street, Nixville, Missouri, six five seven one four. So, Mr. Mayor, city council, good evening. Sorry for my tardiness.
We start really right on time, it's our thing.
I thought I could sneak in where no one would notice, and then all eyes just came to me, I was like, oh, damn. So, but yeah, you did see the sign, we're Bliss Brothers Solar, and then our DBA is, actually, that is our DBA is Bliss Brothers Solar, but our company is Solarplex. And we're just, we just bought the property about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, so hopefully everything will go in line with, of course, you know?
Well, congratulations and welcome.
It's good to be here.
Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir. This is a first read, so please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill twenty-two dash fifteen by title only.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title Four Government Code, Chapter four oh five, zoning regulations. Article four oh five dash one, section four oh five point zero two zero definitions, four oh five point zero, or, excuse me, four oh five point one five zero, C one local commercial district regulations. Four oh five point one six zero, C two general commercial district regulations. Four oh five point one six five, C three general commercial district regulations. And article four oh five dash five, height and area requirements, exceptions, and modifications.
There will be a quiz on this later, Laura.
Your turn.
Thank you. The proposed amendments to Chapter four oh five of the zoning ordinance include the following. Permits the bars and taverns in the C one, C two, and C three zoning districts. Those are all three of our commercial zoning districts. These uses are also permitted in the M one and M two zoning districts by that graduating scale of permitted uses I described earlier. General language cleanup to ensure clarity of the intent of the ordinance, including the following. We added a definition of bar or tavern. We eliminated the distance requirements between bar or taverns and specific uses. The proposed Chapter six hundred amendment that will be discussed next will address the state-required separation between bars and taverns and churches and schools. We added general retail businesses to the permitted uses for C three, and we're making a slight alteration to the height and area chart that did not make it into munich code correctly. So just a little bit of amended language there as far as the references.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions or discussion from council on this issue? Yes, sir.
I know you said you're probably gonna address this in the next section, but what is the thought process behind removing this specific? You said other uses, but it's specifically churches and public schools.
Yes, so staff feels like the most appropriate. Yes. So staff feels like the most appropriate location to describe any distance requirement would be in the actual liquor licensing section, which is Chapter 500, or Chapter 600 instead of 405 zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
So you're moving it from one place to another?
It was actually described in both, but we're just making the clarification so that there's not any misconceptions of the inappropriate place because liquor licensing is very specific. We feel like that is really the most appropriate location to describe any differentiation between zoning districts and those types of particular uses.
Other questions or discussion? All right, any citizen comment on this issue? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number 10 on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-16 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title VI Government Code, Chapter 600, Business and Occupation, Section 600.010, Definitions, 600.020 License Required, Classes of Licenses, 600.030 License Regulations, 600.040 Schedule of Licenses, 600.050 Application for License and Renewal, 600.060 Minors, and 600.070 Miscellaneous Offenses, and adding new Section 600.015 Application of Missouri State Statutes.
Thank you, ma'am. You could have paused and, you know, taken a drink or something?
It doesn't fit in my section, so I have to scroll.
You gotta get you like the automated voice to say all this to me.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Please continue.
Thank you. The Builds Department is requesting amendments to Chapter 600 relating to alcoholic beverages to serve the following purpose: stricter adherence to the regulations of alcoholic beverages and liquor licensing is present in state regulations. We are removing duplicate language of the state regulations as the City of Republic cannot issue a liquor license without prior issuance of state of Missouri liquor license. We're adding in addition to a permitting process to accommodate liquor catering, and then general cleanup of the ordinance to ensure clarity, including the following: defining proximity, which is later used in calculating the distance between a business licensed to sell alcoholic beverages and a school, church, or other place of worship. The Builds Department will calculate the method of measurement separating a business licensed to sell liquor or consumption and any adjacent or nearby uses. This method allows for a stricter interpretation of the 100-feet distance requirement of state regulations. So in the actual ordinance, you'll see the striking of quite a bit of language. This is all duplicate language that is present in state regulations. So we feel like, because state regulations are generally stricter than City of Republic regulations, we cannot issue a liquor license until we have the actual state license in hand. There's no reason to unnecessarily complicate the process. So a removal of a lot of language. The only thing that will be stricter now is the, our defining of proximity and our measurement of that 100-feet rule.
So are we using the state as our guide on how to do this?
We are. We are defaulting to the state. If you look through the state regulations on liquor licensing and consumption, there are many, many pages. So a city cannot issue any type of liquor license for consumption or sale until you actually have that state liquor license in hand. So we don't feel like it's really necessary for us to duplicate that process. Our duplication of that process is simply, once they bring that liquor license in from the state, they apply for a business license, we're going to then apply our proximity definition, verify that they meet that 100-foot rule, and then we'll be able to issue a liquor license on the city level.
Did I understand you correctly to say that we are stricter than the state on the proximity rule?
Yes.
Okay, explain that.
So in this particular instance, they do not define the proximity between the sale or consumption of liquor and the associated liquor license and adjacent schools or places of worship. We are saying that our definition is going to apply from that front door or primary access to the business selling or consuming alcohol to the nearest property line of the adjacent school or place of worship. So in many instances, this may actually be a greater distance than that of the way the state actually calculates it.
Have we run this by the school or talked to the schools at all about this issue?
Yes, we've had a conversation with the school, and there are no objections.
Questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, do we have any citizen participation or comments? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so this will come up for a vote. Next, council meeting. Moving on to item number 11 on the agenda, this is 22-17. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-17 by title only.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to execute a cost-share economic development agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the expansion of a portion of Route MM Brookline Boulevard between the Interstate 44 interchange and the Route 360 James River Freeway interchange.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As your, the council is probably aware, the city was awarded a cost-share project with the Highway Commission back in November of last year for the expansion of MM Highway from Interstate 44 to James River Freeway. That's a five-lane expansion from its current configuration, which in places is two lanes, and in some places is actually three lanes. So this agreement just formalizes that project between the city and MoDOT and the Highway Commission. So the end-all was that the state would contribute $6 million, the city would be responsible for $4.2 million because the project's estimated at $10.2. And I want to explain the funding just a little bit because it's, the council's also going to see an agreement for a MTFC, Missouri Transportation Finance Corporation loan, coming up for the $4.2 local match. The way this project is going to be built, it will take approximately five years from today, which was basically when we're starting. And the way the funding's going to flow from the state will be $2 million per year annually for different portions of the project. And the city's going to allocate their STBG urban funds, which we get from, through OTO and through MoDOT, allocated to the city directly. So why I say we're going to take a $4.2 million loan is simply to cash flow the project in expenditures, so that we don't using local dollars to fund the project. As our funding rolls in from other sources, we'll be paying back the loan. And at the end of the $10.2 estimated, I anticipate that the encumbrance on the street fund locally will be $300,000 over the five years.
So for the project, it's going to cost the citizens?
$300,000.
Okay.
Out of the $10.2. I think we did okay.
Well done. Questions from council?
Mayor, so how is the MTFC, like how is that structured as far as?
It's, so, the way they, they use highway funds is there's an abundance of funds that don't get spent every year because it takes so long to deliver transportation projects. So I think some time ago, the state said, we can loan these funds on short-term, low interest to get projects moving. And then once they're repaid, they get allocated back to the transportation projects that were, they were originally planned for. So it's a low interest, I believe it was just over 1% for 10 years for that amount. But I anticipate that before we actually finish the project, we'll have paid back the loan in full.
Thanks. Other questions? So, just so I'm clear, this project you brought up a year ago that was going to cost $10 million, you said you'd go find the funds. You really did go find the funds?
Yes, through, through a lot of partnerships, and one, and I actually forgot one. Green County, we're working on an IGA with them, the council will see that, too. They've also offered $1.5 million to this project, too.
Why are all these people so willing and interested in investing in Republic?
You know, I think when you see the city awarded an economic development cost-share agreement, those are different funds at the cost-share level. So there's, there's two pots of money. One of them belongs to the Department of Economic Development. So I think what you see here is a belief that this investment will spur further economic development in the area. So you see benefit to the highways commission, you see benefit to the county, and obviously benefit to the city through that effort.
Anything else from council? Well, if you do think of anything, please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions. This is number 12 on our agenda. This is 22-R-15, a resolution of the City Council authorizing payment to Missouri Rural Services Workers' Compensation Insurance Trust for coverage for 2022 through 2023. I need a motion and a second to take up this resolution, 22-R-15, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Hi. Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa Addington, Chief of Staff. It's that time of year again for the work comp premium renewal. And just for, to recap, the work comp renewal really consists of three main criteria, and that is the proper code assignment for each position, salaries increased, not only in the dollar amount, but in the actual positions, and then that position alignment with the code, and our claims history. So this year, we looked at the past three years of our claims. We knew going into this year, we budgeted appropriately, that we were going to have a high premium, higher than normal, due to the claims that we had in the last three years. So we did anticipate this. We budgeted appropriately. We budgeted 21% increase. It came in at 19%. We did go out for quotes as well. So in addition to our current provider of Missouri Rural, we had two other claims, or quotes, excuse me, and the lowest quote was Missouri Rural by about $40,000. In addition to being the lowest, they just provide great service. We have no, no concerns with them whatsoever. So we are recommending, and just keep in mind, this is an estimated premium. We are audited midsummer, so there might be an additional cost. But right now, the estimated renewal for '22 to '23 is $262,289. Just wanted to add, last year's audited premium actually resulted in a credit. So that can happen as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
How long have we been with this company?
We've been with them for a long time. So I think we went back to '09, is as far back as I have seen. We've been with them a very long time. They just provide excellent service. We do go out for bid. We do try to get other bids, but I really don't have any concerns with them. So.
Other questions from council?
I was just curious. You said the rate, the claim rate went up?
It did.
Yes, do you know, just, is it just because of all the building projects and the things that we're doing?
Um, it's a combination. So it's a combination. The reason why we got a refund is because our position alignment is good. So that, that's one area that we had struggles with, with the old software converting to the new software. But part of it is just adding new positions. We added 65 new positions last year. So that's always going to raise your rates. And then in addition, we did have a large claim in '18, and so that's actually going to drop off for next year. But we had another large claim in '20. So it's a combination of that.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call, vote for a resolution of the City Council authorizing payment to Missouri Rural Services Worker Compensation Insurance Trust for coverage for 2022 through 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries six to zero. Moving on to item number 13, this is 22-R-16, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the Builds Department to apply for the RACE grant through the Ozarks Transportation Organization to be used towards the Highway MM realignment. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 22-R-16, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just realized I wasn't introducing myself on all the other items, so I hope everyone knows me by now. But Andrew Nelson, Builds Administrator. So you're going to have to hang with me on this one because this is a little bit interesting. We're taking the project that I just spoke about, the cost-share project, combining it with the other sections of MM that are planned improvements, and putting that into a cost-share application, or a RACE grant application, which would be federal funding to do all the projects. So there's three, three sections. Am I getting that right? Okay. So you're basically talking from Interstate 44 all the way to 60, or all the way to ZZ?
Yeah, 60.
Oh, sorry. I'll get there while I'm asking those questions. But all the way to US 60. So part of the RACE grant requires a local match, and what we're doing is taking a project that we're getting ready to do, that's already funded, and using that as our local match. So we're trying to leverage dollars that we've already obligated to go and get more money to do these projects. And what I'll say, why that's beneficial to us, to the city, why we're the applicant, that portion of MM from Amazon or Farm Road 160 to 60 is programmed for 2025 in our region as a priority for OTO and MoDOT, and that's estimated at $34 million. So if we're able to get federal grants in the amount of $34 million by, through this application process, we will relieve $34 million for the region for further transportation improvements, just in all of southwest Missouri. So I think it's important that we take this opportunity to go and get more dollars with the dollars that we have obligated. By far, this is, I'm standing up here talking about it because I had the, the project before, but Garrett, Debbie at OTO, they've really put a lot of work into this. It's a really good grant application. It is competitive. There are areas that we won't compete well in when it, when you're talking about social justice and underprivileged areas, we won't compete well there. But as far as safety and highway improvements, and how far we are in planning for, for this highway, I think we are very competitive.
Questions, discussion from council?
One more question in, in the packet. Why is there a map of the trail system?
I cannot answer that question. By error, I would imagine.
So, part of it, there will be trail components as part of this RACE grant. So if we do receive the RACE grant, there will be trail components built along MM as part of that.
In conjunction with, with the road?
Yes.
Okay, so I do know why.
Andrew, is there a downside to applying for this grant? Are we counting on this money? Like, is this something that we, we need, or is this just?
No, I, it gets us, I, I don't see a downside. It gets us further down the road with improvements that we know we need, and then it relieves the area for $34 million of improvements that we can use elsewhere. I-44 is a big regional priority. 60 through Republic is still a priority. This frees up funding for other projects, Nixa, Ozark, Stratt, all of them.
Who else competing for this grant?
Uh, this, this one is a nationwide competition. We've, we've done this in the past. I think in 2017, it was a Tiger grant. In 2018 and '19, I believe it was a Builds grant. And then this last iteration is a RACE grant. And there, there are other grants out there, too, that I think we'll pursue as, as partners with the OTO for, for more highway improvements. A lot of this money is allocated through the bipartisan infrastructure bill. So as time goes on and all those monies get programmed and all the guidance comes out, I think you see more of this.
Anything else from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President?
And so is OT, OTO is actually the applicant that's applying for this?
As a plant, as the metropolitan, metropolitan planning organization, they cannot be the applicant. The city has to be the sponsor, and, and MoDOT can't, can't be the applicant either.
So they're just kind of our liaison or?
Correct. Yeah. And they're, I'm not going to lie, they're doing all the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin. All right, as this is a resolution, I can call it directly for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to reports from staff.
Just two items. Thank you, Mayor. You may have seen on our website and social media platforms, we have began the recruitment hiring process for police officers and firefighters. So excited about that. That was a direct result of the tax that was passed last August. We received a small amount of tax revenue in February, received about 75% of our projected revenue in March. So those funds are beginning to roll in, and as they roll in, we're going immediately to work on hiring respective staff. I believe Chief Sales says we might have one onboard by the first part of April, and the rest of them will come along in April and May. So so excited about that. Thank you to the voters again for their support on that initiative. The only thing, other thing I had to report is Friday, March 25th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00, I believe that's right, Lisa. Our HR team actually coordinated a huge career fair, so it's really cool. It's at the community center. We're going to be there, the school district's going to be there. But we also have a lot of big players in the region that are going to be there. So so excited about that, and thanks to HR for putting it on.
Thank you very much, sir. Reports from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm actually, I don't know if this is the discussion for now, but I've received some emails and just people who are moving into state are moving. Mr. Mayor, I'm actually, I don't know if this is the discussion for now, but I've received some emails and just people who are moving into state, are moving in here from out of state. Just the concern of development going on, received texts yesterday of just people who are living in agony as the city grows and the development. Just us as a city council and as, as the builds department, just holding the developers a little more accountable to creating more green space within developments. So I just wasn't sure when would the appropriate time be for discussion about that and how we even go about?
Well, I think, first of all, it's sitting down with Andrew and, and discussing kind of their procedures and discussion about that. You, you're certainly free to make statements about that as a goal. As far as actual, I don't know, Andrew, what do you think, how's the best way to deal with that? I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
But I was just putting on the spot.
I'm learning, I'm really new to this, I, I'm really curious how we do that. I don't know if that's a matter of going from high density to low density, or?
I think the way we've prepared for council requests like this in the past, we provide a staff report on what we have. And then if you have like any recommendations on what, what we would like to see, we provide a, a staff report on what that would take to approve. And then we, we provide that to the council, and if the council chooses to make that a priority, then we, then we pursue it.
So what I would suggest is, take your concerns, discuss that with Andrew as to this is your concern, and then Andrew can prepare a report, or his staff can prepare a report to address those concerns.
Yeah, if, if there's anything in particular, certain buffering, certain zoning transitions or densities or things like that, we would just do some research and then prepare a recommendation.
Very good.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
Anything, Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to express my thanks to all the citizens that came to planning and zoning, the citizens that came here tonight, appreciate all of your input. And I appreciate all the input from all of the citizens over the last few weeks, talking about the quiet zone. I appreciate all, everyone being civil, and of course, everyone that responded to Facebook. But other than that, just remember, we've got an election coming up really soon, there's a lot of school board, I don't wanna call it school board activities, but meet the candidate activities for current school board candidates going on in the next few weeks. So just, don't forget to vote, we'll be meeting after, so not traditionally like we used to, but other than that, I'd just like to thank everybody for the great conversation this evening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, I don't have anything to report, except that we are going to go into executive session. No further action other than the announcing, announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or as allowed per, per RSMO six ten point oh two. We will be covering number one, RSMO six ten point oh two one point one, pending and or potential litigation, closed session, closed vote, closed record. Number two, RSMO six ten point oh two one point two, real estate acquisition, closed session, closed vote, closed record. And finally, number three, RSMO six ten point oh two one point three, hiring, firing, promotion, or disciplining personnel, closed session, closed vote, closed record. I have more practice reading those things, I'm sorry. Roll call vote for adjournment.
I'm gonna do a motion second. Please.
Motion for executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson? Councilmember Grooms?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Passes six to zero, we will start executive.